Let's call this meeting to order and do a roll call, please.
Mayor Dickey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Tolles.
Here.
Councilmember Sharnow.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Magazine.
Here.
Councilmember LaCron.
Here.
Councilmember Spelitch.
Here.
Thank you. Tonight, as we're going to be discussing revenue options, we're going to be looking forward. We're going to learn from things that have happened before and move ahead. We've seen previous councils, including some of us sitting here right now tonight, navigate through the same process for probably a lot of years. So I'm going to be stealing some stuff from Councilman Sharnow, who said some things in The Times that I agree with, that even though we have seen this happen before, the circumstances are largely unchanged. I don't know if a lot of people know that many of us who've been here for a while did pay property taxes on the roads and on the fire district. And over the years, those were eliminated. So really, since the fire district was eliminated, the town has been a little bit struggling to maintain that particular service. Through cuts and creative staffing, deferred projects, and we have had some success with funding, the budget's been balanced, but the core issues remain. Without some revenue relief, despite our best efforts to curtail expenses, we will be unable to sustain our assets, our public safety levels, and the services that make this community our own treasured hometown. We're seven different individuals here, which is so great. We have different ideas. We're trying to represent over 24,000 people. Total agreement is never going to be possible, and it's not even really desired. It's time for all of us to look forward, like I say, in good faith, which I have total confidence in. And we're all, all of us, not just us, all of us, will take responsibility for where we go from here. Kind of reminded me some of the options that we're looking at when you're on a debate team, and you get assigned the position that you don't really agree with, and you have to make a really good case for it. And I think that that leads to good understanding and compromise, which is where we are today. So we're here to listen. We're going to listen to our staff and listen to each other, of course. But I wanted to start out with if anybody had anything that they would like to say before we start. This would be a great time before we go into it. Did you fill out a card by any chance? Sorry. Well, you can come speak, but then if you wouldn't mind filling out a card, then we can have a record of you speaking. You come up to the microphone, sir.
Is that a question?
Oh.
Is this a meeting where the expense side of the formula?
Well, the...
I understand today's...
Yeah, that's what the agenda is for at this point. Our entire budget process will be with both of those items, but we are very much looking at curtailing expenditures, as always. Thank you.
And to the point, the council at the retreat also looked at that a few months back.
Yes, yes, that's true. So did we have any speaker cards? No? Okay. Well, why don't we start, if it's okay with council, let's listen to the whole presentation. Grady will set the table. We'll listen to the whole presentation, ask questions as we go, but if it's okay with you, let's wait until we all get to discuss before we take action. Is that okay? Great. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I think you did a great job of setting the stage of where we are. Just to kind of set the parameters for the sake of the public who are here tonight and council, we went through a process of identifying future shortfalls a couple of years ago, and the council at that time decided to move forward with the possibility of a primary property tax. And that was referred to voters last May, a year ago last May, and it failed. It failed miserably by a two to one against. But even before that time, we had presented at a staff level to council revenue options that we had hoped that they would take either some of the options you'll see tonight or the primary property tax. We have revised our numbers, our estimates, as you're going to see tonight. The Finance Director has done that. We also have two different scenarios. One is if we're just on fumes, and I hate to use that term, but if we do nothing but just our current expenditure levels, we're anticipating a $4.5 million shortfall in the next five years. We also, as part of the primary property tax, we had identified a lot of needs that the town had. And when I say "needs," this is not staff saying, you know, these are needs of staff. These are needs of the community. And so you'll see a little bit of that tonight and a little bit of that next week when we have our budget workshop. So these revenue options, we had a discussion just on this particular topic a few weeks ago, and council had a really lively discussion. I know it was much longer than what any of us anticipated was going to go, but I think it was really good because, for the first time, I saw council members coming up with some really creative ways of trying to deal with the shortfall issue and also a willingness to try to solve this problem. So I'm very grateful, and I'm very hopeful that tonight we'll leave with what I hope to be some direction on some of these revenue options. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Finance Director Craig Rudolphy, who has a presentation. Mr. Rudolphy?
Thank you. Mayor, council. To set the stage a little bit more than what the town manager mentioned, in my opinion, we are facing financial challenges. We're projecting a $4.6 million cumulative shortfall. We have made significant cuts and contracted out significant services. 62% of our expenditures of the general fund are contracted out. We believe that it is a structural issue based on revenues, not on expenditures. As the town manager mentioned, we did have a primary property tax election in May of 2017 that was not successful. So this is my five-year forecast, and I say assuming status quo. The town manager's reference was running on fumes. It's assuming that we do what we're doing today, that we don't implement, undertake any new services, that we don't maintain our infrastructure in a manner that would be more prudent. It is continuing to operate as we have, balancing the budget. We felt that it would not be appropriate to put in items in the budget if we knew they cannot be funded. So this was an issue that we faced with the property tax election. We presented a five-year projection and then a 10-year projection, and the public, in my opinion, was confused as to how we could get from a small shortfall in a five-year period to a large shortfall in a 10-year period. We, me, did not do a good job trying to explain, educate, distinguish between the two presentations. So when we say "status quo," I'll repeat, it's doing what we're doing today without undertaking many things and without doing what most of town staff would feel should be done in order to provide the quality community that we currently have. So graphically, this is what it looks like. We're balanced in 1920, but by the time we get to 2324, our revenues are not keeping up with our expenditures. In numbers, here's how it translates. So $4.6 million deficit increasing each year as we go through the five-year period. Here's the other projection, which we're seeing includes deferred items. Those deferred items are things that staff feels, in a perfect world, we should be doing to maintain the community that we have today. Will it raise questions among some council people and citizens as to why do you need to do that? Yeah, but in staff's opinion, they are things that we should be doing. These are the additional things that staff feels should be done over the next five years, and these are totals. These are not individual one-year totals. Providing additional staffing. Staffing is essentially a little bit more than half of what it was 10 years ago. Contractual services, a lot of that is funding for the facilities replacement fund. It's $1 million a year, so that's $5 million of that $11 million. The capital expenditures is a lot of our capital projects. Some of that is the increase in pavement maintenance. We're suggesting that we need an additional $1 to $2 million annually for road maintenance. So this is how it looks for a five-year. The green line is our revenues. The orange is doing the status quo, and the red is including those items that staff feels would be most appropriate to do to continue the community. It's a little bit easier to see. The blue is the revenues, and the green is the expenditures. So number-wise, this is what it looks like. So it's a big difference over the five-year number, but this is including those things that staff feels we should be doing today. We've heard comments, both through the primary property tax and subsequent to that, that why don't we just issue bonds and use the bonds for our maintenance? I was not clear when I gave some explanations. Yes, we could issue bonds to do maintenance. However, those bonds would not be tax-exempt. If we're going to do maintenance, tax-exempt general obligation bonds cannot be issued according to the Internal Revenue Code. If we issue bonds, tax-exempt or not, they do require interest payments in addition to the cost of the projects. So overall, it's going to result in a higher cost to the residents. So here are some options that we came up with. Based on the meeting about a month ago, town manager and I and staff have worked on what we felt council had given us some indication that would be feasible, that they would like to continue to see us explore. First one is sales tax. We can increase the rate on some or all of the categories. Each 1/10 of 1% is approximately $340,000. There is a proposition, Proposition 126, that was passed a year ago, that indicates that there is no new taxes allowed on services. Legislature did not define services. There currently is litigation underway by two or three communities to try to determine a definition of services. We don't believe it would have an impact on sales tax rate, but that is not clear. And then I've indicated what a 3/10 or 4/10 of a percent increase would generate on an annual basis. Our actual sales tax for 1718 was a little over $10 million. That $10 million translates into almost $400,000 of gross sales. We're looking at, as you can see, a $30 million aggregate over five years. If you divide that, that's like $6 million a year. To get $1 million in additional sales tax revenue, we'd have to increase our gross sales by roughly $40 million. To get $6 million, you're at $240 million. That's almost, that's more than 50% of what the town is generating today. In my opinion, that's not practical. For comparison, I've listed all of the TPT rates, sales tax rates, for the communities in the valley, indicated, and it's based on the retail rate as opposed to the total rate. So if you go down the retail rate, ours is 2.6%, highlighted in red. The communities that are above us are shown there, and this is the remainder of the communities in the valley. So I'll kind of toggle back and forth between those two to give you some perspective. And then on the far right, we've indicated whether those entities have a primary and/or secondary property tax. And as you can see, the vast majority of communities have some primary property tax as well as a secondary tax to pay for their outstanding debt. Another option discussed was a public safety fee to cover the increasing costs of sheriff's office and fire protection. We currently have 600 businesses in town. There are an additional 557 home-based businesses. So collectively, it's 1,157 businesses. Households, we have 11,699, according to one of the sites that we use for general economic development information. The town has approximately 15,600 parcels. So there was some discussion about using households and businesses for a fee versus parcels for a fee. There are fewer households and businesses than there are parcels, so logically, if you're going to attempt to create a fixed amount, you're going to have to charge more for households than you would for parcels. Just mathematically, if we determined that we wanted a $150 household public safety fee, it would generate 1.8 million in collections, assuming that it was paid at 100%. Our environmental fee is not paid at 100%. It's paid at 90%, I'm sorry, collected at 90%. So a public safety fee of $150 at a 90% collection rate would be 1.6, 1.7 million. The bottom of the page, I've listed the projected increases in public safety costs. Not the total public safety cost, just the increases in the public safety cost. Rural Metro, the fire at 3%, and MCSO police at 10%. Currently have an environmental fee. This is our history on the environmental fee. If council recalls, some of you will recall, when the fee was adopted, it was not meant to cover the entire cost of environmental fees. It was meant to provide relief to the general fund to help provide coverage for the environmental fee. For fiscal 1920, on the next slide, our projected total environmental costs are $154,000. We're only collecting $492,000. This is what makes up what we're going to spend for environmental costs for fiscal 1920. Some of it is new items. Well, we never presented the full costs when the fee was adopted. We gave you some of the highlights of, these are the costs that we're hoping to recover. This is a pretty good collection of all the costs, and some of them have gone up, obviously, since the fee was adopted five years ago. To cover that $150,000 would require a fee of $62.50. If the fee were doubled to $6 at our current 90% collection rate, we'd get almost $1 million. We'd collect more than our estimated costs, so it would provide some relief to the general It was suggested that we have a public safety maintenance infrastructure fee to cover those costs. Once again, 600 businesses, 11,699 households, and 15,6 parcels. At $350 a year and $400 a year for commercial, for households, not parcels, it'd be a little over $4 million a year or $16 million for the four years. Commercial would generate $240,000 or almost $1 million over the four-year period. Our collection rate for the environmental fee of $36 is 90%. If we were charging $350 or $400, would be my anticipation that the 90% rate would not be achieved. Other possible revenues. As we discussed or was mentioned, we are currently undertaking a comprehensive user fee study. Hopefully, the results will be presented before the summer break in June. If not, it will be presented in September. The town has property on which cell towers are located. Any contemplation of selling or leasing those sites would be a one-time revenue. The town has been approached by at least two different firms that would like to propose selling or buying either the property itself or leasing the property. Franchise fees, estimated might generate $200,000 annually, but it would require a ballot question. Council could consider another primary property tax. And lastly, we could hire an advisor to assess the finances and to come back with some other So here's our summary of what we could do. Sales tax, public safety fee, continue the environmental fee, implement a public safety maintenance infrastructure fee, sell or lease town property or cell towers, franchise fees, and primary property tax election. Our recommendation is to raise the sales tax 4/10 of 1% to 3.0%. Generate 1.34, 3.6 million per year. Implement a public safety fee of $150, depending on the collection, 1.6 to 1.8 million. Increase the environmental fee, double it from $36 to $72, generate an additional $492,000, and would provide some relief to the general fund. Take action early next year on the user fee study. For the process, I have not included and would not suggest to include any of the fees that council might choose to adopt in our tentative budget, which will be adopted on May 7. That budget on May 7 establishes the maximum budget amount, which means that we would not be able to, even if we collect money, spend it in excess of the amount that we adopt on May 7. Since we don't know the collectibility of any new fees except for the sales tax, that would be the basis for my recommendation, that we not budget for anticipated fees that council might adopt. If you agree with my recommendation, those fees would just be collected at the end of the year. They would be considered excess revenues, and they would be transferred to the Capital Improvement Fund, which would thereby increase the balance in the CIP fund that would allow for additional projects or for semi-reigny day fund that we could use for unexpected expenditures. If we were to adjust sales tax, it would most likely become effective September 1. Per statute, any action to adopt new or change fees requires a 60-day posting notice. So based on direction that we received tonight, we will issue such notice tomorrow, tonight, tomorrow, and then on June 18, council would take any actual action to implement any new fees or make any changes to existing fees. That's all I have.
Thank you, Craig, very much. Anybody have any questions for Craig before we get into the discussion? Yes, Councilman?
Just a quick question, Craig. If we were to, say, implement a public safety fee or any new fee besides the environmental fee, what would be the timetable on that and the billing? Would it be kind of the same time as the environmental fee goes out or different?
We chose billing for the environmental fee in early January, assuming that most winter visitors, residents, would be here during that timeframe. So if we issued bill in early January, we figured we'd have January appropriately March to pursue collections while most people are around. I would recommend that we follow the same schedule.
I have a couple of questions. The cell towers, do we collect any kind of rent or lease on those?
Yes, we do. We are collecting...
$1,500 a month on average, isn't it?
No, it's more than that.
Per cell tower?
Oh, per cell tower, yes.
$1,500 a month? And then, just to go back to the environmental fee part, when we actually first talked about enacting it, we included some pretty major capital projects, like Ashbrook Wash and things like that, that were almost $1 million in one year, and I remember $700,000 in another. So seeing it this way, we might be looking at it differently, but there's always been more expense to that than what we've been able to collect.
Absolutely, yes.
This added more operational, but if you looked at some of the big projects that we had to do, they were quite costly.
They were, but Ashbrook was partially grant-funded, so that's probably not a real good comparison. But yes, we've historically always had more environmental costs than we've been able to collect.
Thank you. More questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Could you just review again the bond options and clarify again the different types of bonds that the municipality can go and ask for voter approval and the cost associated with obligation bond that would allow us to use the funds for maintenance in the community?
Typically, what communities, what we would issue would be general obligation bonds. There are other types of bonds, such as revenue bonds and municipal property corporation bonds and road bonds. Road bonds are typically funded with HERF dollars, so we would pledge future HERF revenues to pay off the principal and interest on those bonds, which would also reduce the monies going into our street fund, so we would have less money in our street fund that we could use for what we call maintenance today. Revenue bonds are typically issued when there is a dedicated revenue source. So a typical example might be, my old history, I came from the toll road industry, and toll roads issue revenue bonds and dedicate their toll revenues to pay off those bonds. Municipal property corporation bonds, MPC bonds, we currently have some outstanding. They're issued by the municipal property corporation as an arm of the government to build buildings typically to lease back to the town. At the end of the lease term, which coincides with the end of the life of the bonds, the buildings revert to the town. And then the biggie is the general obligation bonds. They're typically issued for operating purposes or for construction of projects. In the municipal world, by far, the majority of GO bonds are issued as tax-exempt bonds. It is for higher-income people, a way for them to shelter some of their income from taxation, from the Internal Revenue Service. The interest rate on tax-exempt bonds is pretty much directly relation to the non-taxable bonds, I'm sorry, taxable bonds. So if a taxable bond is 5% interest, a muni bond would probably be about 2% or 3% interest that the town would pay.
So municipality, excuse me, would be, have an advantage of having a lower rate if it was tax-exempt?
That is correct, and that's the whole purpose of it. The community benefits by paying a lower interest rate. The owners of the bonds benefit by having that interest considered tax-exempt.
Do you want to follow up on that? Yeah, I want to follow up on that. So for the public's information, can you clarify that we have a bond right now, the Saguaro Bond, that is going to be paid off as of 2020? My understanding is we have about $300,000 outstanding on that bond. If we were to explore one of the revenue options, to look at asking voter approval for... for a bond that would be used for maintenance, meaning now we would be, it would be an interest expense, but the bond could be amortized and possibly even be double of what Saguaro was and amortized over a longer period, but with the purpose of dealing with these maintenance issues that have continuously been deferred, and it may be an opportunity to a one-time solution with a purpose and an end in regards to the payments, which would, in my, my thinking, allow the residents to approve a bond without increasing what they already are currently paying if it's amortized appropriately. Can you touch on that?
It's, it's similar to a car loan. If you want to get a three-year car loan, you're going to pay more annually, but if you decide to stretch it out to a six-year car loan, then obviously your principal and interest payments are going to be less. Same principle for bonds. They could be five-year bonds, which were the Saguaro Road Bonds. Typically, GO bonds are 15, 20, 25 years because they match the life expectancy of the asset that they're being used. I am not aware personally, in my prior experience, of any government entity issuing taxable general obligation bonds. They all strive to issue tax exempt general obligation bonds. If they are tax exempt, they cannot be used for maintenance.
Right. And that's, mayor, and that's a situation where, that's where our challenge is, is that the money that we're trying to increase the revenues are going to be needing to be used for maintenance issues, they're going to be needing to use, be used for general operating expenses for the community.
Yes.
Yes. So that is an option, and, and for our records, what is the town's bond rating currently? And what would we potentially expect to pay if we attempted to issue a bond?
Would we be issuing taxable or tax exempt?
It would be taxable because we need the funds for operating expenses, and that's the challenge that we're having.
The, the town's bond rating is AA plus, which is very good. We're currently for tax exempt bonds paying roughly 2%. They were issued in 2014, 15. Rates have gone up since then. My guess is we would probably be paying for tax exempt 3%, and my guess for taxable bond might be 5%.
So, so you're saying that your educated guess is a 3% variance in the tax exempt versus taxable bonds? And for our purposes, I don't think that we really even should be talking about the tax exempt bonds because the funds we're trying to raise would be needing for operating and moving forward with the obligations of the community, and we'd have to have that bond money able to be used for general obligations of the community. So, thank you.
I think Grady wants to say something.
Yeah, I just want to ask for clarification. So, I mean, I'm hearing a couple of different things. One is I'm hearing taxable bonds being used for maintenance types items, and then I just heard just now talking about using them for operating type costs. So you would not be using anything like this for operating costs, it would have to be maintenance, major maintenance items. And so that would be items that would not qualify under the description or qualification of capital type items. But we have plenty of items that are, for instance, in our capital replacement fund that are actually what I would say qualify for tax exempt. So the, the liner, for instance, in the, the lake, that certainly would qualify. There's a number of things that we have, playground equipment and things that are over a certain value. I believe our capital threshold is 50,000, correct?
Correct.
So we could actually have a taxable bond, and then we can have a, a bond that is considered, you know, voter approved. We also have streets, and the streets are all, so long as there are mill and overlay or reconstruction, those would all be tax exempt, qualify. So, but I just want to make sure that, that the vice mayor, I'm understanding where you're going with that, is you're thinking of primarily streets, or are you thinking about other, other maintenance types of items?
Mayor, town manager, I'm, I'm assuming, I'm talking about operational, I'm talking about all the obligations of expenses that we have, and my understanding was that if we had a taxable bond, that we would have much more flexibility in regards to what we can use the money for. So if I'm hearing you, then you, you may be breaking up portions of the monies that we would ask for voter approval, so that some aspects, some of the bonds would be tax exempt, and some of them may be taxable.
Possibly. And the other thing I just want to make very clear is that if the credit reporting is, agencies see that we're trying to use debt service to try to finance what should be normally our operating expenditures that we fund on an ongoing basis, they're going to downgrade our credit rating. So I just want to make sure that we understand what the money would be used for.
Okay. And, and to that point, if we're in such a crisis right now, and we are publicly indicating that we are going to have financial shortfalls, wouldn't the creditors already be looking at our town in a very, very vulnerable position? And that would essentially be making your point that we are already there?
Yeah, I'm just, I, I just don't think that this is a prudent way of, of handling things. If, if you're talking about taxable bonds for maybe major maintenance types of items that don't meet up to that 50,000 threshold, we could probably put together a list of those types of items, that probably makes sense. But if, if it's things that are like funding operations and things like that, that, that's just, you don't, it's like putting your operations and, and putting on your credit card, and that's just not the way that you can manage a, an organization like a town or a city.
Councilman?
I think I'm going in the same general direction, and I think what I'm going to ask is mostly hypothetical, but do interest rates on bonds fluctuate?
Absolutely.
That takes care of the rest of my question. I was going to ask, we, a top priority is roads. For the entire town, I see somebody going like this, our top priority, now, can you hear me? Okay. Top priority is roads. We have said we need about $6 million per year to do what we need to do, and about, I don't know, $25 million for the whole town. And so the question I was going to ask was, if you had taxable bonds, do we know what that would cost us and the homeowners? But if the rates are flexible, it's a moot question.
Well, the rate is flexible up until the time that the bonds are issued. At that time, the, the rate is fixed.
That's what I want to know.
Once you buy them, it's, yeah.
Oh, that's, that's what I was asking. So they're fixed once you buy them?
Once you buy, there are instruments that are variable rate bonds. I, once again, would not recommend that the town consider variable rate bonds, but typically they're fixed rate bonds, so once they're issued, when the Saguaro bonds were issued, the interest rate was fixed at that point in time.
Again, hypothetically, let's say we need $20 million for roads. And we had taxable bonds, is there a way to calculate, there must be a way to calculate, what it's going to cost the homeowners over different periods of time?
Yes, that's beyond my capabilities. Our financial advisor would be the person that I would have to contact.
I'm not proposing it, but I am thinking that we have a real problem. We have a real revenue problem, and we have, I got lists here of all kinds of things we cannot fund. And this list goes out to like, what, 2044?
Yes.
Craig's going to be tired of hearing from me, I call him all the time. We can't fund those things. We have no hope of funding those things, in my opinion. So the question becomes, what's our priority? If the top priority is roads, and we have to forget about all these things, is it worth it to us to, to use taxable bonds? I don't know the answer, but is it worth looking at?
Councilman Sharnoff?
Thank you, mayor. I was, one question, the tax exempt bonds can be amortized over a longer period of time that the vice mayor was referring to as well, for taxable bonds, so you could stretch out the payments over a longer period of time and make the payments less, correct?
Typically, our Saguaro bonds were five years, and typically the long-term debt is 30 years, so there would be a significant difference in cost.
And the other thing I was, I was going to point out, which Grady did, was the mill and overlay question, which is considered like a capital expense or a reconstruction of the roads, so you could use tax exempt bonds for mill and overlay. We just approved 3.5 million the other night for mill and overlay, and, and we saw how it's just scattered bits and pieces all over town. So the paving management report did indicate, as Councilman Magazine noted, recommended $6 million a year for street maintenance, so I'm sure a big portion of that is mill and overlay, so we could, you know, post, ask the voters next year for, say, an $8 million bond, tax exempt, to cover the number one priority, if that's what we say it is, for streets, that would cover mill and overlay and other capital-related items for streets.
Councilman?
Yeah, Councilman Sharnoff, I understand what you're suggesting. That would be fine for one year. What do we do the next year? I think you're proposing a bond of 8 million to cover a little more than a year, and we can't do that much in one year, so wouldn't you have to go back every year for, for new bonds?
If, if I may, one of the things that we talked about at the council meeting on Tuesday, when the whole discussion came up regarding the pavement management program, we're going to be coming back to, hopefully around September or so, with a, what I would call a 10-year pavement management program that actually outlines what our needs are going to be over the next 10 years, based on certain street condition levels or PCI. We're also going to have that, taking account how much it's going to cost to do that, and also taking into consideration the 2.5 million dollars that we typically have a year, and then figure out how much we'd have to finance. So, but anyways, that's going to be coming back to you folks, I believe, in, in September. So, I, I do think that the conversation about the taxable versus tax exempt bonds is, is a good discussion item, but again, I, I would caution you to only consider that for maybe certain things if you ever wanted to go down that path.
I just want to add that the idea of the not, of the taxable, we're paying more interest, so we're paying more, you know, to finance that, so that puts our community at a disadvantage there. And, and the idea of having something be more years than the usefulness of what you're doing doesn't make a lot of fiscal sound sense to me. And if we use taxable bonds for operational sort of things, the bonds are going to have an end, but those particular expenses don't. So I think what we're looking at is multifaceted ways to solve problem immediately, and then look at bonding for the liner or for the roads or for other things like that. The, the, you know, the fact that we balance our budget every year because we're making the expenditures less, that is, that, the fact that we, that we're now, we are seeing that we would like to do more is not going to affect our bond rating the way we, if we go to the well for bonds in ways that they are rated, then we, our rating will go down. It's, they don't look at us and say, oh, that town's in trouble, because everything that we've done so far has, in, in those aspects that they're rated, has been done prudently. So I don't think we shouldn't talk about taxable, but I don't, I would not prefer to use taxable. I'd prefer to keep it tax-free bonds as we go forward. But again, that would be, we'd need to have it, an election, and so what are we going to do right now for these same imminent issues that we're talking about? Yes, councilwoman?
I have a couple of questions back to this list that we've been presented here. Do you have any guesstimate if we were to sell town property or leases for the cell towers, approximately what that might bring in?
I have their offers there upstairs, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head. They were in excess of $1 million, but they would be one-time revenue, and they were looking for 20 or 25-year leases.
And then, as well, the next item, adopting franchise fees, what, did, a guesstimate what you were thinking that might bring in if we were to?
200,000, and I can't remember, and Grady, if you could help, was that per utility or for the two together?
It was, it was for the two. It was for Southwest Gas and also for the water.
Oh, roughly 100,000 apiece.
All right. Thank you.
I have a question. If we go ahead with any of these items tonight, especially the sales tax, and we actually do start collecting in September, so that fiscal year doesn't end until January, uh, July, sorry, July of 2020, would it be possible to have a contingency fund where we could place some of those funds because, for example, what happened with the storm this year? So we, if we saw ourselves next, you know, Christmas time and we, and something happened like that, something unforeseen, could we raise our expenditure limit by, say, $500,000 so that we'd have, have the ability to use that should something happen that we're not able to foresee right now?
Just a point of clarification, you said, could we raise our expenditure limit?
Well, yeah, you know what I mean, the, what, what we...
What we could spend?
Yes.
Yes, we could. But it would have to be, it would have to be included in the tentative budget that council would adopt on May 7th, because that's establishing the maximum amount, which cannot be changed at all throughout the year.
Okay. Councilman?
Craig, you had told me, I believe, that we need about $2.1 million per year for the next four years or so, four and a half years, to balance the budget. What would that not include? In other words, we, we cut services and, and infrastructure and all kinds of things all the time, just to be able to balance the budget?
That 2.1 million that I use for your example is the year-five shortage, and that is maintaining the status quo, meaning we would not do anything new, undertake any new projects, try to maintain existing levels of service, but not implement anything that staff feels would be appropriate or should be done.
So if we, if we were to come up with a combination of revenue increases that added up to 2.1 million, in your view, that's a bare bones budget? A status quo budget, I guess?
Yes.
Adding nothing new?
Correct.
How much would be in there for roads? About 2.5 million?
Well, those numbers are only for the general fund.
Right.
And our roads are paid out of our streets fund, so that's not, it wouldn't generate anything additional for streets.
Yeah, right. Okay.
Thanks.
Councilman?
Thank you, mayor. So we've talked about both parcels, collecting through parcels and collecting through households, and there are more parcels than households. Does each household, are you counting every apartment, every condominium, every townhouse, single-family home in the, in the total count of your homes?
I'm going to embarrass myself, I don't know. I've gotten the numbers from our economic development director who subscribes to a service that provides us with estimates of households.
I see.
They're primarily coming from the Census Bureau, the American Census Survey, and then our company does some adjustments to that. I've been unable, in the last week, to try to find a data source that would provide me with names and addresses to use as a billing for households.
That's where I was headed with that, thank you. So, but we, we currently bill on parcels, isn't that correct?
Correct.
And would you, would you say that that's the way we should continue to do this in the event that we change the environmental fee or add a public safety fee, or would you still say we should continue down the road of billing for parcel?
Town manager and I have had that discussion. His preference is to bill by households to eliminate some of the issues that we've encountered billing for parcels. My recommendation would be to continue to bill by parcel.
It sounds like to me that the... It sounds like to me that the staff and town manager are-
You know, the, the reason why, and you recall, we came back to you right after we implemented the parcels, and we had all sorts of bizarre situations, and so, anything we could do that would be clean, I would love to just do, if the council wanted to go down this path, households, but the staff feels very strongly that they've been able to clean up some of the addresses that we have. The only issue I have is every year, we have a certain percentage of turnover of property that is sold and bought, and, and I don't know how we stay on top of that. I, we try to rely on the county assessor and treasurer's office, and we are always finding errors with that data that we get from them. So it's just, I can't help but think that there's a Dunn &amp; Bradstreet, or some other source of information, Experian, or something out there. But the other advantage of going with the parcels, with all the exceptions that we've made, we've had some experience now with it, that we know what we can generally predict, how many are billed with parcels right now. So we've already kind of done this, okay, these lots that have two parcels, we're just going to have the one parcel. So we've already kind of done a lot of that cleanup. So, to Craig's point, and to Bee, who also helps with this, if they're wanting to do that, I'm willing to stick with them and go down the parcel path.
Okay. But thank you, town manager, if I may continue.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I, I see this problem as being twofold. We've got, we've got a short-term problem that we need to deal with, and in the short term, while we're dealing with that, we, the council, will have to come up with a, a plan to get us over the ten-year hump. And I think that we need to be looking firstly to get through the first four or five years, and during that first four or five years, because it's, it's quite clear to me, after looking at these numbers, that we're in trouble. And it, it is a situation that I think that we can overcome, and if I may, I've got some thoughts and ideas that I'd like to at least present to the council to start the process of maybe moving this forward a little bit, if I, if I may. And first of all, nobody wants to ask for money. I mean, it's difficult to do, but Fountain Hills is a living, breathing town, living, breathing community, and we cannot live here free. I have said for the last ten years that I want to be on the council that shows the strength, that makes the tough decision to make Fountain Hill solid again. And I see, I, I see the most important issues are public safety and then roads. And I, I see public safety, because that, that affects every soul in this town, whether you drive a car or not. And a public safety fee is a very equitable situation to every person, every home, every business, regardless of size or value. You currently receive the same service from MCSO and the fire department. That's saying that it doesn't matter if you live in a 10,000-square-foot house, or if you're in a 900-square-foot condominium, you receive exactly the same service from the fire department and from the sheriff's department as the next person. Same with the businesses. And so, unlike most fees that we've talked about, where, for instance, on the environmental fee, we're charging $36 per parcel, and that's really not equitable for the people that live in a 10,000-square-foot house compared to a 900-square-foot condominium, where I see a fee for the public safety as being quite equitable. And my motion, if we go down this road, my motion is to establish a $150 public safety fee per household parcel, however, however the staff decides and the council decides is the most equitable way to do it, including every parcel and business located in Fountain Hills. And I actually, through my thought process, had originally thought that the $150 would be a good fee, and so it's not so convoluted, totally eliminate the environmental fee, so we're only dealing with one fee. Now, after looking at your numbers, and after listening to the council, I would take, take the council's advice. Do we eliminate it, or do we add it to the $150 of, for the, for the public safety fee of $150? Do we add the $36 to it, or do we take it away from it? And if we take it away from it, it's, it's very palatable, and with that, and raising the sales tax by three tenths, and I see four tenths is what's represented by staff, three or four percent, that gives you the 2.8 million, and when you get rid of the 90 percent, or the 10 percent that don't pay, that clearly gives us the 2.1, 2.2 million that we're looking for on the short, short-term basis to get through the, through these times. Does that make sense?
Did you say mayor?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
It makes sense to me. I think this does get us through the next almost five years. However, I am extremely concerned as to, as to how many homeowners will refuse to pay. We're at a, what, 90 percent collection rate for the environmental fee, which, by the way, I do think we should not have the environmental fee if we do this. It concerns me that the 2.1 million could be quite a bit lower, depending upon the reaction of the public. So I want to ask, I want to ask council a question. Aaron, I guess the question is, would you look into, would you see if there's any way that this would be enforceable, in terms of people paying? I think we have to look at all possibilities.
I do not wish to don my attorney hat, however, in conversation with prior council, unless statute specifically allows for the collection of a fee, such as leaning property, we do not have that ability.
I'm going to hope that our present council gives us a different answer.
Counselwoman, Counselwoman? Counselwoman LaCron?
You're done. Well, these were my thoughts coming into tonight. I, I knew that what I wanted to, I guess, come to a conclusion about, was something, and multiple things, that were fair, that were open, like everyone knew what we were going to be doing with it, and predictable. And what you've said, Councilwoman Brown, and especially your explanation for the public service fee, that it does apply to everyone equally, that is enticing to me, because I wasn't sure about that fee. But the fact that it's fair, and that we're telling everyone what it's for, and that it's predictable. I think the thing that was concerning me with the environmental fee was, it was a certain amount one year, and then a few years later, we're doubling it. Is that going to keep going, right? And maybe it will if we have exorbitant increase in costs, but, so what I was looking at is fair, open, and predictable. So that is why I do like the sales tax, because I think it meets all three of those criteria that are important to me, and I think are important to the public, right? Transparency, and fairness, and so forth. And after your explanation for the public service fee, I think, safety fee, public safety fee, I do think it fits my criteria. I agree that I think we should either add the environmental fee, or into that amount and raise it, or get rid of it, because, I don't know. I think that makes sense. So, those are my thoughts.
Councilwoman, Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I would add to that is, you know, and I said it back in February at the retreat, and, and you're right, Councilwoman LaCron, it's, it is more fair, and it's more understandable, too, public safety, everyone knows what that is. I mean, there have been so many questions the last three years, well, environmental fee, what does that pay for? What, you know, what do you do with that? And so, it's clear, if you issue a public safety fee, well, it's going toward public safety, which is obviously police protection and, and fire and emergency medical. So I think that's much more clean and clear. And, you know, if you take away the environmental fee, and, and say, increase the public safety a little bit, say, 200, you know, the only concern, again, is the enforceability of it, and, you know, it's just kind of, kind of what we're left to deal with in light of circumstances over the past few years, and then how this council and our town has gotten to this point. And as I stated, you know, the other week, and it was in the paper, I mean, nothing has really changed since the defeat of the property tax vote. I mean, the situation is the same, and the numbers changed a little bit, but it hasn't changed the factual situation that the town is in, and we're not, we're going to be looking at the budget coming up, and it's, it's not, you know, we're not throwing in whimsical, frilly things. These are core services that we're talking about here, and trying to fund just an ongoing basis. So, our slice of the state shared revenues are probably going to keep decreasing, because we have limited border, our population growth is going to be rather limited. Other cities are growing at a much faster rate, they're going to get a bigger slice of the pie, and these are the things we've been facing for years. So, we just have to kind of come to realization that, yes, in the short term, we need to deal with these things.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Okay, Mayor, thank you. Councilman Brown, excellent job in your evaluation of these issues and your recommendations. You know, the sad part about this public safety fee is that we had discussed this two years ago, and we asked for legal counsel two years ago, whether it was even legal, and statutorily, whether we can ask for a fee. We looked at the fire fee, a fire fee, a safety fee, a public safety fee. I, I see that, I would see fire and public safety mean, public safety being police and fire, essentially. Those are the two major expenses that we have, well over 50 percent of the funds that we need to spend for public safety in our community. So, I would agree. The sad part about this fee is that the fee in the expenses associated with the Maricopa County Sheriff's Department contract, it is projected that it's going to be 10 percent increases year over year. Now, last year, when we had the new sheriff come on board for this first year, we had no increases in that contract. And now, we are starting to see these increases in the subsequent years, which, from my understanding, is covering a substantial amount of unfunded pension liabilities that are going to continue to grow. So, I, I would be, I would be agreeable to this particular fee with a caveat, that we need to do some serious planning as to whether or not our community would be better served in another capacity, meaning that we would have some sort of intergovernment agreement with another community, possibly, maybe even a Fort MacDowell that has a dispatch center, because we do not have a dispatch center, and that's the most expensive part of the component to put this together, including the, the capital costs associated with the automobiles, et cetera. So, that's, that would be a caveat, that we have to look at options, because that's, that's unsustainable. We, we're going to be looking at three years down the road, saying, you know, that 150 fee needs to be 250 now, and the 250 needs to be 350 now. So, I see that no longer as a fee, I see that as a taxation, essentially, without representation, that we are now taxing the citizens of this community without their vote. And the higher those fees get, I think you have some statutory issues, and also potential liability, that someone will take note of that, and try to stop us from allowing these fees that we're calling fees, that ultimately are classified as more of a tax. So, that is important, 1.6 to 1.8 million dollars, that's a lot of revenue. The environmental fee, if the environmental fee essentially is an expense that is increasing, that is justified, again, I think the concern with the residents of the community is that they don't want to, they don't want to pay for and be charged something that they feel is going to be frivolously spent by the town. And that has been an ongoing message that we've heard for the last few years. So, if it's truly an expense that we can justify, then that's something that we should also consider. I'm against an increase in our sales tax. The increase in our sales tax, I think, is a bad idea. I think you look around right now, you notice that we have tremendous vacancies in this community, and we have a lot of mom-and-pop type of businesses. And they're struggling in Fountain Hills to be successful on their own. And our biggest competition, in my opinion, is Scottsdale. Scottsdale's at 8 percent right now on their total taxes, according to Craig's last, last slide. I think that everything we can possibly do to, to encourage residents of our community to shop locally, and to help the businesses of our community be successful, we have to do. I also want to make another point, and this is in regards to the crisis that we have continuously heard for the last couple of years and longer than that. Have we and can we look into the town of Fountain Hills and areas in town, enterprise investment zones, tax-free investment zones, for businesses to come to Fountain Hills? If we are having this tremendous financial strain on our budget, can we look at programs and opportunities that will encourage investment in our town, and start to generate the sales revenues, as you said, that we need, the additional $40 million to increase 100, to increase a million dollars? So, I'd like to, I'd like to see us keep the sales tax as is, and I'm open to these other discussions on these other fees.
Thank you. Councilwoman Spelch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have sounded the alarm about the skyrocketing cost of public safety well over a year ago, and I knew that it was going to get worse. I think I have a special expertise in this field. So, I knew where this was going. Did I ever expect that the MCSO contract would go up $600,000 this year? No, I didn't expect a $600,000 increase. Many of us are wondering, well, what are we getting for that extra $600,000? The manpower will say the same. Let me preface these remarks with absolutely no slight against law enforcement, nothing against any MCSO officer. These decisions, budgetary decisions are made way above their pay scale. Any patrolman, any captain, anybody in the rank and file of this department has no control over what the sheriff decides to charge this town. No town that is under contract with MCO saw a significant increase, as much as we did. You can say it's because we had more homicides than we normally have and all that. I think that's nonsense. Councilman Brown's idea of a public safety fee is fair, because everybody uses the fire department, everybody has the ability to call 911. I think what we lost sight of, though, is when we set these fees and these taxes, their taxes, fees, let's make a concerted effort to collect what's owed to us. I had said that $126,000 was uncollected in the environmental fee. Let's try to collect that. I said that there was $655,000 in uncollected court costs, of which 286,000 will come to the town. Let's try to collect that. When we make efforts to collect fees that have already been imposed and are already on these residents, when we, if we decide to take Councilman Brown's idea of $150, it will show the residents that we're going to collect what's owed to us, which is only fair, and then we set the standard that if you don't pay, we're going to take it seriously. Because you can assess a fee, but if you don't care about collecting it, then what's the big deal? You know, so, I, I think, you know, I, I take Director Rodolphe's statement about, you know, you can expect less of a collection rate as you begin to increase the amount of the fees. Yeah, I think that's true. There's always going to be people that aren't going to pay, because you can't lean their properties or whatever. But I think what people are looking for in the town is fairness, and I believe that the public safety fee is fair. I think the past council, no offense against the sitting members on the- against the sitting members on the council, made a huge error in charging $36 for environmental fee when it never covered the cost of what the fee really was. I know that, you know, you're, you're trying to take a small bite of the apple because you're trying to introduce a fee and you don't want the public backlash. But now we have the backlash, because people have emailed me and said, why did this fee go up, why is these costs of this go up so much? Well, what they don't realize is that that cost was always there, but the town was eating the cost of that fee and only collecting a portion of it. So, now we come to a point where the fee isn't fully, the fund isn't fully matching the fee, and we look like jerks for asking for it, because we should've asked for it from, from the start. So, um, I'm not, uh, I'm not too high on this, uh, sales tax increase. Uh, I believe with Vice Mayor Tolles that that does affect business. Um, uh, the environmental fee, I believe, needs to somehow be added into the cost of the public safety fee. If not, we're defeating a purpose. We're robbing Peter to pay Paul. So, uh, uh, I think the town, I guess I'll close with the town, let's focus on getting the money that's owed to us, number one. Number two, let's seriously begin the process. And good God, I don't mean, let's charge for a study. We have plenty of police officers, rank and file, command staff people, that put numerous law enforcement budgets together for police departments way bigger than Scottsdale, Paradise Valley, and everywhere. Let's tap these people to look into the ability to start looking into having our own police department, what it's gonna cost. The initial outlay is gonna be more, because we don't own the cars. It's not like the fire department. It would be easier to transition into our own fire department. We own everything. So, it's easier. But yes, to Councilman Tolles, and we had this discussion, um, we would have to piggyback off of a, a major, uh, dispatch center. Uh, we would need cars, PDTs, uh, computers and everything to make this happen. But we need to focus on it, and we need to really put a concerted effort into looking into this, because these fees are gonna keep going up. It's not, it's not, once again, let me stress, it's not the rank and file of this department that protects us. It's way above them. But it's gonna continue to skyrocket. We're gonna continue to come here. That $150 in two years will be $200, $225, $250. It's gonna go on and on and on and on. So, let's make a concerted effort to look into that. Let's make a concerted effort into collecting what's owed to us. Um, and maybe that'll set the precedent for people believing that the fee, we're serious about collecting the fee. Thank you.
Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Vice Mayor, I'd like to point out that if you look at Scottsdale all the way across, it's true, 8 and 8.05% for the total rate, but they have a P and an S, that's primary and secondary. And, and if we had a primary property tax, we'd probably just cut our sales, sales tax in half.
But we don't.
But we don't.
Yeah, I wanna, uh, just respond to Councilman, well, I wanna ask a question. I think Councilman Tolles indicated he was concerned about, for example, a 10% increase for MCSO, as am I. But Grady, uh, when you say we need, Grady, Craig, when you say we need 2.1 million per year, are those increases, potential increases included?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's important. We're not talk, now, sure, we could find it's a 12% increase instead of 10, but overall, uh, those are baked into the cake.
Yes.
Okay. Second, oh, sorry. Secondly, um, I don't like raising sales tax. Um, it hurts the poor and so on. But let's face facts. A hundred dollars of sales would increase $3. And it would cost, pardon me?
It's only 40 cents.
I'm sorry, 40, right. I never was good at math. Um, it would cost more in gas to go to Scottsdale, uh, than that. And so, I think we really need to consider that. The other thing is, I wonder if we could consider, uh, and I was involved in this in a previous situation, a hardship clause on, on the, um, public safety fee. Um, I wonder if we could look into that, if there's some way that people could come forward and show us, prove to us that this is something they can't afford, they're on the edge, whatever. And we do have people in our community like that, uh, who go to the food bank and so on. Um, I think we ought to seriously look into whether or not we can create a hardship clause, um, which would require them, well, in the previous incarnation when I was involved, uh, they came, people came forward, uh, with their tax returns, income, W2s if they have them and so on. And a determination was made as to whether or not they could afford an increase in taxes. So, I'd like to ask staff to take a look at that.
We'd be happy to. In fact, um, you know, there are means tests that, like SRP uses. And so, I would be happy if, if someone was able to show an SRP bill that they're on a lifeline, that that means to me that they've already demonstrated to SRP, for instance, that they're meeting the means test for that.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Uh, Craig had brought up, uh, an option here or something that we, we wanna discuss, and that's the, uh, the cell tower contracts. So, I, I believe that that would be more appropriate to be discussed, and I think it would have to be discussed in executive session. And I'm very interested in picking the low-lying fruit in regards to revenues for our community. Uh, this is the first time I heard that, tonight, that the number you had shared, which was a seven-figure number, that's a big deal. In my mind, that's a big deal. So, I'd like to give notice for 24-hour notice and get an executive session to discuss this matter as soon as possible, and preferably even before Tuesday evening. That's a, that's a lot of money. And if we can, if we can accomplish that quickly, uh, I, I can't, I would like to know the pros and cons and why we wouldn't do that.
Councilman Charno?
I agree with Vice Mayor on the cell tower issue. That, that probably is definitely worth exploring. A couple of different questions, comments, uh, it's kinda all over the place here. A lot of things discussed tonight, obviously. On the collections issue, which Councilman Spelch brought up initially and then again tonight, are we addressing that issue in the proposed budget, Grady?
Yes. Uh, we went ahead and put in a contract position. It's actually not really a position per se, but it's in contractual services. So, the person could be either brought on or if, um, at the time, we weren't sure whether the council was wanting to go down a, you know, collections rate, or, I'm sorry, a collections agency or a position. But I believe that there's some advantages to having, um, somebody that works under contract for the town to go after, at least on the court fines and maybe, um, the environmental fees as well.
So, we are, you are proposing to be proactive on that front then?
Yes.
Okay. And then, secondly, the, um, uh, the issue on, on the 14% MCSO contract raise, do we know how much of that is attributed to the pension issue or not?
Um, the pension certainly playing a, a part, a big part of it, but I have to tell you, um, the biggest portion, this is why the other cities did not have, or the other towns that are contract towns, did not have any significant increases, other than they're mandating a new 3% administrative charge on all contracts. Um, the reason for that is it's based on our past year, um, experience. So, we had some very high-profile incidents that occurred last year, and that's the primary driver. I believe it was the overtime and the man-hours that were attributable to those incidents that occurred last year. That was the big drivers. But we're still anticipating, even without that, we would've been probably averaging, um, going forward, 10% increases primarily due to the, um, public safety retirement system being underfunded.
Now, the retirement system being underfunded, is that, uh, are all municipalities and contract cities facing that same issue? It's not just us, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. This is happening all across, um, Arizona. All the, all the participating fire departments, fire districts, uh, police departments and MCSO and other county sheriffs around the country, or around the, um, state plus DPS, they're all in the same boat. Um, basically, they're, over the years, they, um, basically had, um, made some decisions that probably were not the best decisions as far as, um, benefit enhancements, that were not actuarially based. As a result, um, they've had actuary studies that indicated that the system is underfunded. The other issue is that the way that the pension system has worked in the past is that it's been a confederation of multiple pension systems that were administered by the, the state. And so, um, they've made some reforms, um, but basically, um, from what I've seen, the actuary studies are saying that it's gonna be this way probably for the next 20 years. And then it's gonna get to a point where they're meeting their, their financial obligations, and then those rates are gonna start dropping. That'll be close to 20 years.
Okay, then real, uh, real quick, on the, um, switching to the sales tax, um, issue, uh, was pointed out, you know, we're in competition with Scottsdale and obviously, you know, the other valley cities. Uh, I, I agree with that to a certain degree. On the other hand, I think that would apply on big-ticket items, possibly, you know, vehicles, uh, maybe appliances, uh, you know, along those lines. And even that, I'm not sure how much people really researched that type of thing. Like, oh, City Peoria has, you know, X amount of sales tax. I, I just don't know how much that comes into play for the average consumer. So, um, you know, if we do the 0.3%, as was noted, a hundred-dollar grocery bill, you're, you're talking 30 cents. So, I just don't think it's gonna affect the mom-and-pop shops to the degree that it's gonna hurt them, uh, so detrimentally. And, uh, the other thing is, uh, it's, as I pointed out last time, with the sales tax, it's at the point-of-sale and, and et cetera. It's just, you know, collection isn't an issue. So, from that standpoint, it's a very efficient way to collect revenue. And, uh, you know, the downside is, it is economically cycled. So, state shared revenues and, and the sales tax, uh, you know, obviously during the recession, the town of Fountain Hills and everyone else took a big hit. So, so that is an issue. But, uh, you know, the last time the town raised the sales tax was 2003, uh, 16 years ago. Went from 1.6 to 2.6, and that obviously is a major increase. But, but to me, to, to go up 0.3 is a relatively minor compared to something like that.
Just let me add, too, that that was raised because we lost our fire district, which we were all paying property taxes for. So, that was why we had to raise it. Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'd like to point out that if we, if we don't do something with the sales tax on the proposal that I put on the table, we won't have the, the total amount that we will need in order to turn the nut during this short period. So, we'll have to, we'll have to go back to the drawing table and find, um, another million dollars someplace. And I, I have to agree, 30 cents on a hundred-dollar grocery bill is not much.
Councilman Spelch?
Um, I'm totally interested in finding out, um, as Vice Mayor Tolles suggested, about selling the cell phone towers. I just would like to, um, bring a story to, um, looking at a short-term fix and then it turn into a long-term problem. Uh, Mayor Daley in Chicago sold all the parking meters to a company for a billion dollars. And, uh, in six years, they blew through that money. So, uh, let's think about how much we're gonna, what the long, long-term lease is, what it could generate for a long-term thing. I'm not against it by any stretch. I'm not criticizing it or anything. But, you know, this, to get $1 billion and, uh, be able to blow through that in six years and, like the city did, and, uh, never be able to have that collection cycle again, uh, you know, the residents were pretty peeled.
Vice Mayor?
I think Councilman Spelch just, uh, said we should put parking meters in the parking...
No, I did not. No Bob Burns.
Uh, what, what, um, what I wanted to, to say is to, uh, Councilman Charno's point that, uh, you know, increasing the sales tax is no big deal. And to Councilman Brown, to maybe a hundred-dollar ticket, uh, at the grocery store or, or something. Uh, I have said this before, and I'll say it again. My vision for our community is to be the best of the best, high-end, a, 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 a step above downtown than what you'd expect in other communities that draws people to spend money here. We have, uh, currently, uh, and maybe you know this, but we have Rex Foley, who is an auto dealer in town, that is, is selling higher-end vehicles. Average ticket price on these vehicles, you know, $30,000. That's the type of businesses that you raise a sales tax that they have second thoughts about continuing to grow in Fountain Hills. We wanna encourage businesses that have high-ticket items, high-dollar value items, the Sammies Jewels, things of that nature. I think that that's, that is the, uh, the, that's what we should be encouraging. And when you raise the, the sales tax, while we can trivialize it, that it's really not that much, it's a big deal when you're looking at businesses selling big-ticket items, which is what we want, to be in alliance with the way that our revenue sources are, are lined up. So, that's just one more reason why I don't think it's a good idea. And, and quite frankly, I'd like to see, uh, I'd like to see even go down in the future as we stabilize and, and continue to grow. So, we should be encouraging these high-end businesses. We should encouraging the, really the best of the best to move to Fountain Hills. There's no other community like Fountain Hills. There's no other community that has the views, the vistas that we have. And, uh, I think we are, right now, uh, we have an opportunity to really turn the corner if we do it right. Raising the sales tax right now, I don't think is the right, uh, the right message to send to the rest of the valley that Fountain Hills is raising their sales tax again.
I'd just like to, I'd like to mention a couple of things. So, the legislature has, um, over the years done, you know, taken away one tool after the other as far as a, a municipality being able to, uh, self-sustain. So, of course, um, they've done a ton when it comes to fees, how, when, where, uh, sales tax, who, who can it go to, how can we collect it, um, development fees. They almost blew that out of the water, uh, with our ability to do that without spending a lot of money on the study. Um, so, before we, uh, go further, uh, I think even about the sales tax, though, and about the environmental fee. So, if we say we don't wanna have the environmental fee, I just think that we have to be prepared that our ability to do any of this could be jeopardized or removed by, um, the state at any time. So, say we, uh, you know, say, well, like, we're gonna get rid of the environmental fee. It could mean we could never bring that back. If we say it would be zero and we just wanna go straight to the, um, uh, public safety fee, and whether it's only 150 or whether we put more on it, we, we maybe should keep the actual, um, enactment that that fee exists on our books, because then we would be grandfathered in, usually, if the law changed. Um, so, we gotta keep that in mind, and keep that in mind with the sales tax, too. If we don't pass a sales tax increase now, we may not be able to ever, which, you know, is good or bad for, for whatever reasons. But, uh, to just keep that in mind, that the things we're discussing now, we may not have the ability to discuss even a year from now. Um, I wanted to say I totally agree with the hardship clause if we're gonna raise it, and also the, um, ability to enforce. You know, whenever anybody needs something from the town, whether they wanna build a pool or do anything like that, um, it, they will be kinda flagged if they haven't paid a fee, because the council, I think, two or three years ago, you, you passed something that said if there was something outstanding, they wouldn't be able to go further. So, there's a little bit of a, of a, a, a way to keep track there. But I, granted, it's not as comprehensive as what you suggested, which I think is a good idea. Uh, getting back to MCSO, we, a few years ago, well, no, however, when it was, when you were gonna do the property tax and Craig did the, um, amounts that we were expecting, the 10% was baked in for MCSO. Now, last year, we had a slight decrease. We had not, we had no increase. So, if you look at this 14%, at which it was a, kind of a shocking figure, but if you look at it over the course of the fact that we thought we were gonna have 10% last year, 10% this year, it's actually 14% over the two years. And the 20-year, um, that you were talking about, Grady, has been discussed as a very conservative way to look at it, that they, they're really not anticipating... way to look at it, that they're really not anticipating being in that much trouble for that length of time. But on our shoulders is to be conservative enough and just put the 10% in. But that doesn't mean you look at other options or other ways that we can do it. So that, you know, I think this discussion's going very well, and very, I think I saw a card, so if you want, if you don't mind, well, because I think you weren't here when we said that at the beginning to speak. So if you'd like to say something now, come right ahead, but, and then maybe we'll see if anybody wants to make some motions.
Hello?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman, Town Manager, on turn. Thank you. Michelle Webb. And as you spoke, I was here on Monday when you were talking about a budget meeting as well. And one of the things that I just keep going back to over my head was, and I've pounced it off a lot of other people in the meantime, and even prior to this, was a 300, I love it as a public safety fee. I love your idea. I think everybody uses them. We are all grateful for them, and a way to do that would be a $365 fee. It's a dollar a day. So a dollar a day, we're getting safety. Our firemen, our policemen, and that's the first year. That would actually bring in, again, looking at parcels, I was doing the math, I had done it before in many different ways, so we looked at it, and the parcels being at $15,600, it brings in $5,694,000 at just a dollar a day for everybody. If you did it at $500, let's say, for the first year, first three years, we keep it at 365, and then we go up to $500, which is only $1.36 a day, you're looking at $7.8 million. That's huge. And it, you know, and it's something that we can all relate to. We all need these people. These are, this is, I think the public safety fee is a phenomenal idea. Talking about the sales tax fee, I'm kind of, I've heard a lot of talk tonight, and I was kind of against it, and then I was kind of for it, and then I was kind of like, no, I'm not really sure, given that we are trying to bring business in here. And I think that's something that people, yes, it's very minimal on the little things, but it can really make a big difference if we do want to make some bigger, I mean, in bringing a car investor in here, or whoever that might be, something with a big-ticket item, that becomes something that they're going to go to Scottsdale, they're going to go over the Little Mountain, and there we lost it. You know, $100 groceries, not so much, but if it's anything higher than that, that's where they're going to go. My other one was the cell tower, and I think you bring up a very good point. I know in New Jersey, when I wasn't even living there, I was, my father was looking at getting a cell tower on his property, he was going to bring in about $36,000 or $40,000. You're saying we're only bringing in 1,500?
No.
That, a month. That was a month. That was a month. Didn't you, did you?
Per cell tower. We have five cell towers.
Okay.
So it's... Do you have a better number?
Yeah. Come on, speak up.
At least 3,500, but then we have 2,300. They range, they're all over different...
So 5, 7,000 a month.
And I guess I also question, can we negotiate those? Can we negotiate those fees to AT&amp;T and to all the others?
We can when the lease term expires, and they're typically 20-year leases.
Okay, okay. That's what I wanted to ask, because, you know, as you say, a million dollars right now sounds great, but when you tell all those parking meters, then all of a sudden, now, a million dollars, it doesn't go very far. And I think the answer comes down to a dollar a day. That's what I keep telling everybody, a dollar a day. So that in itself, and the last thing I just want to say is transparency. I know that everybody in this town thinks, oh, you're going to get the money in, you're not going to do anything with it. Why don't we just keep it wide open? Just, this is the money that just came in. Here is your $5.694 million, and this is exactly what we're going to do with it, the public service, you know, public safety fee. Bring in our own people. I mean, it really makes a lot of sense. So for my...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor? Councilman?
I certainly don't want to squelch discussion, but to me, it's sounding like it's getting very repetitive. And I'd like to ask Town Manager what he thinks the process should be going forward.
Sure. Okay, so we're kind of under the gun right now, under state law. So under state law, statutorily, we have a 60-day window from the time any new fees can be adopted. And so with tonight, we're like on the 61st day, assuming the council gives direction tonight. If you decide to take action on any of the items tonight individually, we will be coming back on June 18th, which is the same night that we take the levy to the council for their consideration. The levy is on the secondary property tax. And you will then conduct a public hearing. Public will have an opportunity to debate and discuss those, and then council will then take their action. And then it will basically go into effect. It takes about 90 days from the time that any kind of sales tax increase is implemented. The Department of Revenue is the responsible party for working with all the businesses, make sure that they get all the information on that. We would be looking at any kind of fee that would be adopted. We would start communicating with people as soon as we could, and start shooting for a January implementation date. So that's, I hope I answered your question.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Just to speed this along and to help our Town Manager and our Town Attorney to move forward with what our policy is going to be, maybe we can have a roll call on some of these, yea or nay, as to who's in favor and who's not, so that we can, we're not voting, and do we need a motion to do that?
Well, if you are okay with it, people can make motions if you're ready, if you're ready, Dennis, to make a motion, and I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's fine. The preference would be to move to direct staff regarding matter X or matter Y.
And we can move one item at a time, so that you're very clear, and each person can say, yea, nay.
Sure. Would you like to do that?
On each one of these? Or would you like for me to make a motion on the...
Well, I think the amounts, just in case, like if you make a motion to increase the sales tax and somebody wants to change the amount, so let's, if you want to do them one by one, and I just want to also caution, if you don't mind...
It is to me.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, he was asking if the motion was necessary enough.
Oh, yes, a motion to direct staff. And then the other thing is that if you, if anyone's inclined to not want to do the environmental fee, maybe you could say we suspend it.
So before I make my motion, of course, I was the one, three years ago, that said, I think we should, we should set a fee of a dollar a day. I mean, it's a sellable, it's a very sellable, it's very, it works, and I don't know how the council feels about it, you know? It's 365 bucks versus 150, and the way this $36 got set was that we started at $75 and ended up at $36. So I have to ask the council how they're going to feel about, just a range, just where you would like to see this public safety fee go to.
Can we ask legal counsel whether or not he feels this is now going into an issue of being a tax versus a fee? If we're just a dollar a day, what's the dollar a day going to? Is it public safety fee?
Strictly public safety. 100% public safety. Everybody knows exactly where it's going to. Everybody participates evenly and equally. So I'd, you know, I would love to see $365 a day, so I would like to...
Just wait one second. Would you mind making the motion on the sales tax first, or, I think it may affect what we, what we're willing to bear. What, sorry?
Agreed. And I think the only other component of the sales tax issue is, there's been discussion as to 3/10ths percent versus 4/10ths percent, so to make sure that we clarify what...
3/10ths. Make a motion. Make a motion.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion to raise our sales tax 3/10ths of 1%.
Second.
Move to directs.
To direct staff?
Yeah, move to direct staff.
Yeah, move to direct staff to make it happen.
There was a motion for...
3/10ths.
3/10ths.
And it was seconded. Does anybody have any discussion or amendments?
I do have discussion. It sounds like there may be some changes in the amount of the fees with some of these other items, which, if we're going to even consider a 365, as you had just discussed, and those numbers are based on parcel, wasn't that number far in excess of what we are looking to even raise on an annualized basis? So my question would be, why would we need to do anything else? And that's to, Craig, that's to you.
I haven't done the math to come up with it, but it sounds like it would cover the amount that we had been talking about in the relatively four or five-year timeframe.
Councilman?
If I may, too, I think Craig also meant to say, we don't know what the collectability is on this, you know? And so because of the higher, I mean, we've, this is 10 times higher than what the environmental fee is, so again, we're not sure, is it a 60%, a 70% collection rate in the first year? We're going to do everything we can to get to 100%, but, so I just wanted to bring that up. And we can ensure that 100% of this goes towards, you know, I'm looking at the math here, and if we collected 100%, it'd be almost 5.7 million. We're paying $8 million for police and fire, so just to let you know that that's where we're at right now.
May I, Mayor?
Yeah, yes, Councilman.
Does Councilman Brown, in his motion, if he motions this, will there be a sunset on this?
On the sales tax?
No, not on the sales tax.
That's what this motion is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right. Right church, wrong few.
Councilman Magazine.
I was, never mind, we're on sales tax.
Yes. So the motion is for, to raise the sales tax by 3/10ths, so that it would be coming a total of 2.9%. And we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oh, a roll call, please, sorry.
Councilmember Spelitch?
Nay.
Mayor Dickey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tolles?
Nay.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Charno?
Aye.
Councilmember Magazine?
Aye.
Councilmember LaCron?
Aye.
Thank you. So next, does anybody have another motion to make?
I'd like to direct staff to set up a public safety fee of $365 on an annual basis. And will there be a sunset clause on it? At this time, I don't think so.
And I wasn't sure, but I thought I heard you possibly say something about a hardship clause, for us to consider a hardship clause.
Yes, that would, for sure, be part of the motion.
And I thought I heard maybe suspend the environmental fee.
And we can suspend the environmental, I was going to do that under a different motion, but that's fine. We can make it all one motion. Is that, is that correct?
It can be done.
So we'll make that...
Is there a second?
I'll second that for purposes of discussion.
Yes, sir.
Could I ask staff, when we were proposing a primary property tax, what was the average amount that a homeowner would pay? Remember? Oh, no, I think it was like 3-something.
3-something, I think, yeah.
The average was, it was based on a $300,000 home, and it was roughly around $300.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, Mike?
No, I guess, just throwing it out there, if you look at, instead of a dollar a day, 50 cents a day, that's half of 365, which is 18250, which is still more than, you know, the 150 originally proposed, and it kind of helps absorb the lost $36, the environmental fee. Not necessarily promoting this, just throwing it out there for discussion.
Councilwoman?
If we do recommend a certain, a dollar amount fee to staff, we're certainly going to be voting on it later, can that fee be level, you know, can it be lowered, raised, when we vote on it? I mean, we're not locked in, right, to this amount? I just think it's a big...
Let's find out, because this is direction, but you want to know, like, when we come back in June, will we be able to change it?
Right, so I just think it's a big, I understand the dollar a day, I just think it's a big jump, and it's a lot for me to grasp, and I understand the concept behind it, but if we're already considering raising the sales tax, and now we're doing, I mean, this is more money than we were even being proposed in trying to raise, so we're certainly going above and beyond what we were looking at. And I know there's a lot of deferred expenses and a lot of things that we're looking to fund, but I'm just trying to get my head around that big jump.
Councilman Magazine?
I can't support $365. What I could support is what Councilman Charno was suggesting, which is adding the $500,000 that we've been collecting from the environmental fee into the total. I don't know exactly, what would you say, $182?
3/10ths.
$182, something like that, per household. I could support that.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I also can support the 182 public safety fee, with one caveat, is that we have to put some timeframe on staff coming back to us with a very, very thorough plan to transition from MCSO to our own police force, and what that would look like. And I think that in the future, we're going to have to look at that. If these expenses continue to rise, they're unsustainable, and as both Councilman Spelitch and I had pointed out in the last discussion, this is just the beginning of this fee, and we're going to be in discussions in subsequent years, saying, you know, now it needs to be 225, now it needs to be 350. And we really need to come up with a better solution, because I do see this as just a tax to the people.
It is.
So we have a motion, and it includes an amount, it includes a suspension of the environmental fee and a hardship clause. Do we have an amendment for the amount?
Was there a second?
Was there a second?
Yeah.
Yeah, for reasons of discussion. So we, at this point, can change that number, can we not?
Yeah, someone could just amend it.
So amend that...
Not a substitute, just amend it.
65 to 18250.
How about 200? Or an even number.
An even number? 185.
Second.
Okay, so...
That was an amendment?
He kind of amended his own. Is that okay?
Okay.
He withdraws his original motion.
So we have...
How about we have him restate his amendment?
Would you like me to withdraw? I'd like to withdraw my motion, and I would like to restate the motion to direct staff to initiate a $185 an annual fee for public safety, and I would like to have the environmental fee suspended.
And a hardship clause.
And a hardship clause.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further?
Don't start in on me.
Yes, Liz.
I just, for the record, I need to have Councilmember Charno either amend his second or withdraw his second from the original motion.
Yeah, I withdraw the original second.
And then Alan was the second on this one. Okay, so further discussion on this.
Can you clarify what constitutes a hardship, and how do you qualify for a hardship?
We'll come up with that policy.
Oh, okay.
You know, that's something, that's kind of an operational thing. We've been doing some stuff along that lines already.
Sunset or no sunset?
I'm sorry?
Sunset or no sunset?
No sunset, yeah, yeah. So I think, are we ready to vote? So, I think, are we ready to vote? Okay, well, I guess we'll do a roll call, sure.
Mayor Dickey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tolles?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Charno?
Aye.
Councilmember Magazine?
Aye.
Councilmember LaCrome?
Aye.
Councilmember Spelitch?
Nay.
Thank you. So, we discussed a few of these items. Was, are there any other things you would like to discuss or motions you'd like to make at this time?
Mayor, I would like to discuss the bonds proposals for street maintenance. And I'd like to see some sort of proposal come forth that's going to be equal to in cost to residents of the Saguaro bond, and how we could, how we could propose a bond package for specifically road repair, streets, and, and keep the existing cost to the residents exactly the same if it's passed. You understand what I'm saying? So, we have an $8 million bond coming to a closure as of 2020. And I'd like to see whether or not the residents would be willing to pass a, another specific use bond for streets to offset the costs that we have. For instance, that three and a half million dollars the other evening we, we voted on, that could have been taken care of with a portion of the bond. Am I being clear?
Yes.
Okay.
And if I may, just to elaborate on that, so we are targeting September for that. That's not gonna be between now and the end of the budget year, because we need to update the pavement management plan, which would identify what we need to spend. And you will want to know what roads and all that are gonna be done. So, that will be September.
True. So, what we've done here is give direction to staff. The hearing will be June 18th. And you'll, the public will obviously be there and able to comment. And I think we're done. So, if anybody'd like to make a motion to adjourn? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.